I am calling to order the Newville DDA meeting, February 4th, by 30:00 PM. Give me, we have a roll call, please.
Kim Jackham?
Here.
Kevin Smith?
Here.
Derek Dean?
Here.
Justine King?
Walking in the door. Stay here.
Eric Schaefer?
Here.
Sheri DeGraff?
Here.
Casey Haney?
Here.
Joe Mancini?
Here.
Okay, pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, we have an amended agenda. The amendments where we modified the bills. So can I have a motion for the amended agenda? And you want to support? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, approval of the consent agenda, which the modification was the approval of the bills from 6:40, 6:25 to 8:16, 25, that was to include our credit card payment for Pixel buying.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor? Oh, wait, roll call on that one, please.
Kevin Smith?
Aye.
Derek Dean?
Yes.
Justine King?
Yes.
Eric Schaefer?
Yes.
Sheri DeGraff?
Yes.
Casey Haney?
Yes.
Joe Mancini?
Aye.
Kim Jackham?
Aye. So moved. Okay, public comment. Any public comment out there today? Okay, having none. Reserve time, we have none. We have no unfinished business. So new business, um, resolution to establish committees. Would you like to address that, please?
Yes, if I could. So this was discussed, uh, this is gonna be the resolution 25 dash zero two, uh, that this is addressing what we talked about at the previous meeting. Um, it'll allow for the DDA to have the four committees in relation to the four pillars of Main Street. Um, we've been discussing this. This is something that the board has seemed to be interested in. Um, so approving this resolution would mean moving forward that committees would be established under promotions, you know, along with design, organization, you know, under those aspects as they're listed in here. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, because this is something that I hinted to.
Number on this at all?
So being that's a DDA resolution, we typically haven't had resolution numbers since this isn't approved by the council. But for recording purposes, it's gonna be listed as 25 dash zero two.
Have you all been able to review that? So, um, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, I'm, I'm motion to, uh, establish committee for the downtown development authority, 25 dash zero two.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Were questions? Okay. We have not done a resolution before, so I'm not sure if that-
Got it.
Do a roll call, okay.
Derek Dean?
Yes.
Justine King?
Yes.
Eric Schaefer?
Yes.
Sheri DeGraff?
Yes.
Casey Haney?
Yes.
Joe Mancini?
Aye.
Kevin Smith?
Aye.
Kim Jackham?
Aye. All in favor, so passed. Okay, a funding request for the village sign and just so you know, we're talking about the village sign up by Holy Playtime and Shell Gas Station, Main Street and Arlington, M37, whatever you'd like to call it. So it's our electronic sign.
We are not replacing that sign, are we? It's a new sign.
Yeah, absolutely. I can go into a little details, as myself and Ms. Danenberg can hopefully fill in any gaps. Uh, there's been issues with the sign that's currently there. Um, so the council had discussed, uh, different options to potentially address this at their previous meeting, uh, where, uh, they had approved an expense to potentially not exceed $20,000. Um, so that was brought to the DDA, as the DDA has done various right away improvements and does a lot for place making in regards to design. Um, so they're asking the DDA if, you know, we would be interested in potentially funding this request, uh, not to exceed $20,000. Um, there was one quote that was provided, uh, which is attached. Um, uh, the fiscal considerations is that the development plan authorizes up to 250,000 for street scape improvements from the bridge to M37, which is where this sign is located. Uh, and the DDA's 2025 budget, uh, which we're working with currently, allows for up to $35,000 for place making efforts. Um, so the DDA board has not incurred any expenses for place making this year, given this sign's importance in promoting community events and economic activity in the downtown district. Funding this request aligns with the DDA's objectives. This is up for the board to decide whether or not they're interested in funding this. Uh, I put alternatives, as we have not yet established the design committee, um, that the DDA board may, you know, look at assigning this, uh, board member to head a design committee for reviewing this request in alignment with place making objectives and bring it for board consideration at a future meeting. If there are concerns with what's being asked, but this is swapping out the panels that are there uh, with upgraded, uh, panels, you know, where it's spelled out better in the quote, but that's my-
You like multi-color and-
And I don't know if you'd like Ms. Danenberg to possibly iterate, like, the issues associated with why this came up? Or, I like putting you on the spot.
Thanks. So currently, whenever we update the sign, I have to physically drive up to the corner and sit at the chiropractor office to update it because our, um, antenna, the radios don't connect from here to there. Um, and now those radios, um, are no longer working. And so the sign is 13 years old. The typical life of a sign like this would be about 10 to 15 years. So, um, this would be, like, Mr. Power said, basically, the guts of the mechanics would be all updated, the shell would stay. Um, and we would be able to, it would be a web-based update now, so we could update it from anywhere. Um, I wouldn't, none of us would have to go and sit at the corner. So.
So the sign is physically going to be the same size?
It's gonna be the same size. It's just swapping out panels that this would allow for, you know, a, a lot more flexibility in what was being promoted.
It's LED. Could we put graphics on there too?
Absolutely.
Oh, really cool.
Yeah.
What was the prior split for the original sign?
So the DDA had previously funded this in whole. It was something that they had worked out for promoting. Um, considerations that I hadn't mentioned, but there's always the opportunity for additional sponsorship and promotion of various events. It's been used for promoting events. We have it, uh, this may allow for us to possibly utilize it more uh, than what the previous or our current sign has, because that sign has not been able to be updated since September.
Okay.
What, what were the stipulations before? I know, like, there was a community garage sale or something like that, and those things weren't allowed on there. What is allowed and what is not allowed?
I believe there's actual policy that was put in place, um, and it, it can only be, it's not used for, like, private, um, if it's county or, um, I know we've done the, um, I would say, like, the parades, we've done things for the schools, um, but just in general, nothing private. Um, but, I mean, that's something that can also obviously be discussed.
Been related primarily to events or public notice information.
Like, when we have the community garden openings or, um, trying to think.
You could theoretically use that sign for promotion packages. So for instance, if somebody is, i- if there's a promotion package for, for instance, the Friday night music, um, series, you could theoretically, if somebody paid $500 for a membership, they could theoretically get their name put on that sign if, if that was part of the program. So as long as it's in line with what our objectives are with regard to promoting and i- i- if it is, even if it's a private company, right? You could theoretically put that on there, right?
Yeah, I think it would just have to be approved, you know, by you guys. Last year, we did, um, include band names, um, or on the sign when we, when we promoted the Riverbank series. Um, I don't know if did that in the past, but I did that last year, so, um, but yeah, I could see there be some good potential for maybe, you know, packages.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
Um-
Big.
What is the timeline as far as once approved, then moving forward with getting that-
So this is something that could be installed fairly quickly. Um, so it, it could be done in a timely manner, where if there were additional concerns with promotion and so forth, my suggestion would be, well, if that's not affecting the concern associated with the ac- the feasibility of this, that the promotions committee could have those dialogue uh, in regards to if we need to make policy changes to allow for different types of promotion or what a sponsorship packet might look like for various events. Those are things that we can work out over the next few months as some of these events are starting to come onboard. Um, you know, the concern is today would be related to the financial.
So my opinion would be that because it is such a large portion of that budget, that the committee does review, so they can prioritize where they really want that money to go, just before we make a final decision. That would be my thought on it.
Well, and was there a reason we only have one quote? Normally, we try to get two or three.
From what I understand, um, I mean, when we're looking at this, uh, it's keeping the shell of that sign, which was already provided by the signed company. So if you were to go out with other quotes, you would be basically starting over with paying not only for the guts of a system, but then also the shell of it too, which likely would be more-
Probably cement and all that.
It, it, yes. So that's my assumption anyway, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, and this is-
Yeah, you can address that.
So I think the big thing is we're looking, the village has already approved the quote. There were initial quotes to go with this. One was a partial replacement of the panels, uh, which in theory would then disresult in a money pit situation where you're constantly repairing because that sign has resulted or come to end of life. So that's why we're going full boat, number one. Number two, uh, we're looking not at necessarily full, but at least some participation with the DDA to help replace this. Um, we're prepared to pay for the whole thing, the villages, but we were looking for DDA participation in this. So, you know, whatever you all think would be an appropriate split to that, we'll be happy to have that. But the board itself had approved the quote to move forward regardless.
So you're just looking for money?
We're, right.
Ninety-five percent.
Right. 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 Right, so, you know, we're, we're essentially- Right, and, and the reason there's a fluff for that is because when the, the sign uh, vendor came in, he had advised that the outlets are fairly old, so we fluffed that quote to not exceed $2,000 due to some possible electrical outlet replacements.
So yes, this memo does state that the original sign was split with the village general fund and DDA. So, um, I think this is something we should absolutely put money into, but how much, I think, would be a committee decision. And, and my, I don't know.
I think we should want to split.
I agree.
You know.
Y'all have the authority to make that decision on whatever, today or tomorrow, or next time, yeah.
Yeah, eighty-five percent. Okay.
I'll make a motion to go fifty percent. I mean, if it, it goes up higher, whatever, but I, I think, I think, you know, we can go fifty percent split with the, with the village.
Or do you want to table it and maybe pay it off?
Or, or, I, I, I mean, I really think the, the concept here would be, I think the comfort zone is committee decide whether or not that portion of the monies that are, that were dedicated to that meet the budget needs for the entire year, then maybe come back. I, I mean, are we in a rush to do this?
Not necessarily, but we-
Before spring?
We've already approved it, removed the board, we'd just like to get this off our docket and move forward with the next thing.
Is there an ability to, like, refund the village? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, could you guys pay upfront and we could reimburse, um, if, whatever we decided?
Yeah, I'm sure that would be an option, but I always prefer that to no.
Is that a po- is that possible?
So it's possible, um, that what, what my recommendation or what I would suggest, if that's something that's being discussed, is that this could be potentially, you know, pushed to the design committee, where we could have that suggestion in regards to what a percentage of, uh, match might look like or if there are any other issues or concerns related to this quote. And then that could be brought back to the manager. The council has meetings twice as often, so we can forward that and we, any adjustments needed, we could do within a time limit.
It looks like this quote's gonna expire in five days, so.
I saw that, but I'm sure it's-
They only do.
We can reach out to them and verify if there's-
Refresh.
But again, we're moving forward, so-
Yeah, they're moving forward regardless. Right, it's just how much the DDA wants to reimburse.
I, I think based on the committee's findings, I mean, in good faith, we, we want to contribute to it.
Yeah, completely. I mean, I think so. Just a matter of how, what other priorities do we have in that category that we want to-
So if, uh, it might be helpful to, um, Kim, can you forward to the slide ways down, the one that says place making? One second. I'll just look forward to it. So i- if this is helpful, um, that looking at the previous years, the last, uh, two years of budget, yeah, just keep, you can turn it. So that slide there, we'll get into it a little later, but if you look at it, it shows how much of the place making budget we have spent in previous years versus how much we had allocated. So, uh, there, we have not spent, um, we spent just over a third of the, you know, budget in 2024. We spent close to it in 2023, but we spent less than 10% of it in, uh, 2022.
Which we've had some grants and stuff in that area, so that's been a huge contributor, so.
I just want to bring this to your attention as you're looking at how much of this line item we've had flexibility in regards to how much we spent versus what we've allocated, so.
And I would, my only comment on timing would be, it would be really great to have this ready to go for the spring, um, especially with the events kicking off in June and obviously, you know, giving it 30 to 60 days in advance notice for the public to know, so it, it would be really something that we're gonna want to get off, off the docket as quickly as we can, because it's, before you know it, it'll be March and, uh, so.
So I know Mr. Mancini had made a motion and there didn't appear to be any support.
Right, do we, do we have a support on Mr.?
I support it.
Okay, so we have a support, we have a motion, and we have a support to go forward with this on fifty percent. Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, then I guess because it's spending money, it's a roll call.
Justine King?
No.
Eric Schaefer?
No.
Sheri DeGraff?
Aye.
Casey Haney?
Aye.
Joe Mancini?
Aye.
Kevin Smith?
Aye.
Derek Dean?
No.
Kim Jackham?
She didn't hear you.
I did, I just did not, I'm excited on it.
On the spot decision.
Yeah. I'll go no, and only because I think it should go to committee.
It's out of respect to the committee.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we did not have a majority vote.
We did not. It doesn't mean we're not.
So is there, is there any other motions?
Yeah, is there any?
For consideration?
I think if you made the motion without the fifty percent, it might get better support, to move it to committee.
Make a motion to twenty percent.
Make a motion with zero percent until the committee decides.
Very well, be fifty percent, it just, it's out of respect to the committee.
It could be more, though, that's the thing. I don't wanna-
It could be more. That's part of the reason too, is it could be more.
I like the idea of the design committee, because, I mean, what if we look at the priorities and it's-
And it is that sign, yeah, yeah.
So I-
All right, I'll make a motion to move it to the design committee.
Nice work.
No percentage.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, for the design committee to move it to there in support, so we don't need a roll call this time, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, cool.
Excellent.
This is highly political.
Yeah. So next is Doug's director's report.
So there's a handful of things, uh, that have been going on last month and cer- certainly some things that I want to make sure this board is aware of, along with, uh, items that I think we need to potentially look at being addressed. Uh, a couple of things, the cost benefit analysis, we'll get into in a bit, but I did include on here about social districts, uh, because there's, there was discussion about this, but, you know, uh, it was left off recent agendas. Uh, moving forward, I'd like to leave items on the agenda until we know that the board is moving forward or is not interested anymore, um, so until there's some type of formal action. Um, you know, so there's a handful of things there. The committees, um, I had included some information about what I've received so far, uh, regarding the committees. Um, one item that, uh, being that the action that the board just took, um, hopeful that we can discuss about, uh, who some of these other committee members may be. Uh, because right now, uh, we have a couple people working in regards to the promotional committee. Um, I would anticipate the entire board being interested in the organizational committee, but, um, especially the design, if the design is going to be taking on the sign requests. We currently don't have anyone there, and I put a couple of the things that relate to the, uh, design committee. Um, so fiscal overview, I'd just like to include this, because I know there was some, uh, concerns, uh, in previous years. But in 2024, a budget of $210,595 was prepared, but the actual TIF revenues amounted to $247,828. Uh, for, uh, 2025, the anticipated TIF revenue is $255,263, reflecting continued growth in funding for downtown improvements, as this is a 21% increase from what was, uh, projected in 2024. Um, the action items, uh, for the board, um, those are items that I'm hoping you can help me out with, uh, possibly moving forward. Uh, one is, of course, uh, application for the Main Street program is included in here. Uh, we get a 50% discount. If this, this isn't something, it's $150. I'm bringing it to your attention, so we can see whether or not you're interested in receiving some of the benefits of the national Main Street. Um, but, uh, can we dwell into the cost benefit analysis now? Um, so part of the reason why I did this is this is something that I said would do, you know, within my first of thirty approximate days of starting this position. So, uh, this is looking at, you know, our expenditures, key per program analysis, long-term benefits, ROI. Um, if we look at the first chart, uh, I picked out a couple of our, uh, what I thought were key indicators in regards to our expenses, because these are some of the items that are either higher in percentage amounts or fluctuation and variance. Um, so looked at salary and wages, events revenue, facade program, and place making. So when we look at the salary and wages, uh, you will notice that there's a decrease, uh, over the past six years. Um, but the reason that that has decreased where the budget has increased is if you look at the bottom, uh, that we've had transitions regarding the staff. Uh, so that has led to the fluctuations, uh, in those, uh, items. Um, moving on to the DDA events, I have a couple items I had included on here that I thought were, uh, worth explaining. Uh, the anticipated revenue with, uh, revenue received along with event expenses and the event, uh, expenses, the actual rather than the budget. Um, I'll get into, you know, a couple other items later, but if you look at, like, for example, in 2020, the DDA revenue received was 52% of the anticipated revenue, but all other years are approximately one-third, uh, except for 2024, where 6% of the anticipated revenue was received. Note that no budget adjustment was ever done, even though we, um, received only twenty or 6% of what we were anticipating last year for non-tax-related, uh, budget revenues. Um, so with the facade program, uh, couple things here. Um, so when we're looking at these programs, you know, we tentatively, what we have listed as a cap, uh, that there shouldn't be any year where we're exceeding, uh, that dollar amount, because we know whether we have funds available, uh, petition could be denied or possibly moved to a future year. But in three of the years, the actual, uh, budget was exceeded by the expenses. Um, you know, so I noted that as, you know, a, a concern, but, you know, the 2025 budget exceeds all year's expenses except for the 2020 and is 20 times, uh, last year's expenses. Just wanted to make sure everyone was able to, uh, you know, put that, uh, in the back of their heads. So, uh, with, uh, place making, we've had fluctuations. A lot of this is, you know, as Ms. King mentioned, related to grants. A lot of our grants revenue had possibly came through here, like the amphitheater or other related projects. So there are certain expenses that may have been approved from previous years that we tend to see fluctuations with revenue and expenses, uh, that affect this category. But this will seem, appear to be the most volatile, as you can see, the, there's significant changes regarding, you know, the peak, uh, weather is still decent changes in the actual expenses. Um, so with long-term benefits, so, uh, one thing we can say in regards to, you know, our tax revenue is, uh, 12% uh, per year has been the increase that the DDA has seen, where, uh, you know, village reports are projected at about 6%. So we're increasing our taxable valuation about twice as fast as the rest of the village. So regarding the DDA's goal of being maintain your increase in the taxable valuation, uh, keep that in mind. Um, with our non-tax revenue, because mind you, all of this includes in regards to what we can do from our mission, uh, we received, there appears to be about a 20% decrease in received funds on average annually if we view this from a linear scale. Um, not the direction we want to go, um, and that is in part why we're restructuring with, uh, new staff. And, uh, that information, I believe, is also included in this packet, uh, for supplemental purposes, where, because ideally, uh, projecting or would like to see about 30% of our budget coming from non-tax revenue. Uh, that's why the, that, uh, salary structure was put in place regarding what their anticipations are from grants and, uh, various fundraising or sponsoring. So, uh, summary, so the salary and wages, the board has not, uh, had consistent staff, as you mentioned, leading to these fluctuations. Uh, with the facade program, uh, included a couple case studies. Um, you know, so property A, these are both downtown properties, uh, but property A, uh, since 2020, uh, has increased its tax assessment by 15% over the past five years, where property B has increased approximately three thou- or 300%, uh, which is generating an additional $3,200, uh, for the board's annual budget each year. Uh, you can surmise which properties those are. I just, uh, picked two that have received grants, uh, in relation to the facade. Uh, but the place making, the village continues to receive more rental requests of the pavilion. The amphitheater's completion should be evaluated for determining impacts on tenants and usage for, uh, determining our return on our investment. So for recommendations, um, you know, I included a, a couple things. Uh, one for salary and wages, board should evaluate staffing needs and consider if there are no gaps in staff. Expenses will, uh, not continue to decline. So this is not likely to be a line item that we're going to be able to pull funds from, uh, in the future uh, without, uh, additional restructuring. Um, and with the events, if the event expenses, uh, exceed revenue, two items should be addressed. One is, uh, studies to be conducted to demonstrate impact of expenses to downtown businesses and community, and two is investigate alternative metrics to determine potential revenue options. I believe I already mentioned that if- determine potential revenue options. I believe I already mentioned that if we're not looking in, we're getting to the last quarter of the year and we're not seeing the anticipated revenue, we should do a budget adjustment so our revenue is matching our expenses. We do not want to have an inflated budget. And as you've seen it in previous years, we potentially had a greater budget because none of these years have our non-taxable revenues been adjusted based on their performance. And with the facade program, you know, applications that are viewed as ineligible due to lack of available budget could be held for consideration until beginning of the next fiscal year. What I'm saying is there's always options to help us with, you know, keeping on our budget and being able to help support the community. And place making, public metrics should be considered for determining impact of funds. You know, anything, whether it's infrastructure, events, we need to show our, you know, metrics that says what type of impact we're having. Talked a lot.
You gave a lot of information.
Questions, you know, my, what my goal would be is this is kind of a precursor, as I'd stated, you know, related to the first 30 days. But in future years, based on the events, I feel that the board should look at and seeing what the impacts are of any of these events. And we should do a cost benefit analysis to determine where we should potentially, you know, put more resources into to create more life and possibly look in other areas where maybe we're not getting the bang for our buck.
With the non-tax revenue dip in 2024, was there, what specifically stood out in that? Do you know?
So there, there was no fundraising or sponsorship opportunities. That only funds coming in were related to the market. That previously, in previous years, we'd had sponsorship opportunities for various events. And one other item that affected that too was our, the funds we received through grants for the amphitheater were not included as non-taxable revenue, at least with how the budget was prepared for 2024.
Okay.
Those would be the factors that I noticed.
I just was curious because as a business, I contributed to a sponsorship in 2024. So I, that number didn't make sense, I guess, but after expenses and whatnot.
So yeah, we had kept a steady budget for the anticipated revenue, but at least when we're reflecting on our, you know, what our actual expenses are that the board approved at the end of the final quarter of 2024, that was what was shown on there, hence the gap.
Any other questions?
Going back to the non-taxable revenue, the expectation was that there was pledged money that wasn't collected? Or how does?
There, there wasn't as many sponsorship opportunities for people to sponsor or engage with businesses or events as there previously was.
So events being held without sponsorship opportunities?
That's, that's correct. Previously, in previous years, we'd had.
Just not as many.
Exactly.
Yeah, there was sponsors, just not as many.
Yeah.
From businesses specifically?
Yes, from businesses specifically. And I think we can contribute that to probably the changing of the guards, because sponsorship is usually done at the first part of the year, first three months, and probably didn't get out there as much. Any other questions for Doug? Okay.
Oh, and I will, as one other reminder too, if anyone hasn't gotten it to me, your development plan, that document was included on here, I mentioned it, please get that information to us because we're anticipating having a joint session with the village council after our next regular meeting. So we can discuss these results, but we can't discuss results that we don't have the information for.
Great. So any other, anything else up here? Okay. So 11 is your village managers' report and your revenue and expenditures. And then I will go back to any comments. Any? Okay, having none, let's go to DDA board comments. Derek, we'll start with you.
No comment.
You have any, Kevin?
I love that I see a lot of people in seats. This is exciting. Let's keep that going. Keep that trend up. I appreciate everybody that's here and just continuing to get giddy about the opportunities that we have in front of us. So thanks for everybody maintaining and being added and volunteering and whatnot. It's, it's going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal ride. I can feel it.
Joe, you have any?
It's nice to be back on board.
It's nice to have you.
I know Doug and I and you have talked about the, the market. We set dates. I don't know if we've approached the council yet for those dates, but we do have probably 22 dates. And I would like to lower the price. And I don't know, maybe.
Then go to committee.
Go to the committee, but lower the price. I think I talked to a few people about coming to our market and they said, no, because it's too expensive. Matter of fact, a couple people that I would have liked to have come since now, we're going to, we're going to Caladonia. So we've got to draw the people in.
Right.
You know, I mean, we don't need, no offense, last year was $200. We don't need that. But anyway, so, and I do have, I gave you a list, I'll give one of Justine, probably about close to 100 vendors that once we decide, we'll get these approved, I'll send out emails. And we need to update the application online with the correct dates and the price and stuff.
Yep. And I'd love to be all the way in committee.
Yeah, right.
And the thought.
And I ask for volunteers, if anybody.
And the thought moving forward is what I had included in the report still, right? Looking at the May 23 through October 17th, three to seven, possibly being proposed to the council and $125. If there's no concern with that, with potentially $10 to $15 per day based on availability, then what we could do moving forward is I can secure these dates, request in the council to be able to have those for events. And then we can look at the financial matters at the next board meeting, unless there's additional committee input prior to then.
Welcome all new members. It's glad to see you.
Anything for you?
It just feels good to be sitting in this room again. That's it.
Good. Good. We'll go down to you, Casey.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you for, I guess, welcoming me, having me on here. I'm really excited and excited to see what we can do.
Excited to see almost full board again. It's been a long time. And I thank you for that, Kevin. Also, I had handed out a potential schedule of bands for the River Bank Music Series. Nothing's in stone yet. These people all have availability on the dates that are shown. The only thing that has to be done now is the negotiation of costs for those bands on those dates. And I personally don't have time for that myself. So this information's here. I did go through the, I think, the majority of the work trying to get everyone scheduled in these dates, but now it's just going to be calling and saying how much.
And getting the dates through the council.
Sweet. Well, I appreciate Joe diving right into the market. Love that. Happy to have you back. And I'm excited for the other newbies. I mean, I know you've been around, but happy to have you back in this room and get to know you guys and work together to get us all back on track. I'm very excited and get these committees moving.
Okay, so I want to welcome all the new board members and welcome back and welcome back. And it's nice that we're almost a full board. I'll update you on the train depot. The water is supposed to be done this spring, but we did pack up a lot of the artifacts that are in there and put them in totes so that, to keep them safe. We do need to get that historical sign. I can't figure what the actual term is for it, but. And then I did talk with Mary from the Holly Trolley, and she is supposed to get back with me, but we were supposed to not be paying for that because they went to Hastings instead of Middleville that night. And then, this is hard for me, and I wasn't going to fall apart, but I am. So that being said, the only people that know are Doug and my husband, but these are my final comments. I read this this morning, start living your life. Time is precious. We often delay our plans, our happiness and our goals, and we think everything should fall into place. Meanwhile, we miss the moments that really count. With that being said, I've led this community, this DDA board, and been on the board since 2019. It's been a privilege to serve. But a wise leader knows when to leave. Thank you for allowing me to do what I call my feel-good job. So I motion we end. Support. All in favor?
All aye.